...on April 30th. Heart Metals manufactures magnesium powders for use in military applications. And they are thanking the Tamaka Fire Department and the first responders for a commendable job in coming and controlling potentially chaotic situation.
Very nice. Can you get copies of that? Do each individual got copies of that?
I don't think so.
Can we get you copies? Can you distribute them?
Sure. If I could add to that too, I'd like to say thank you to our fire department here in town. I definitely do think we have the best fire companies around, so very welcome.
Next is from Charles Mattiak, co-executor, requesting permission to block off a section of North Lee High Street from the top end of Pope's Committee Mark driveway up to Rose Street on Saturday, July 26th, starting at 9:00 a.m., in order to hold a public auction.
Motion made. In a second. Motion made in a second. Is there any questions? Anyone from the floor wish to address the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Next is a request from Ann Gibbons from Gold's Adventure Racing Association. They're a nonprofit organization and they hold charity adventure races primarily in Southeast PA. But they're requesting they use the Bungalow Park for the start of their event. At 6:30 a.m. on Saturday, August 2nd, one to two school buses of participants will arrive at the Bungalow Park and they will have a U-Haul truck of bicycles that arrives and be offloaded. The event will begin with participants riding their bikes out of the park and into the mountain biking trail system on Anthracite, Redding Anthracite property. We expect all people and vehicles to depart the area by 8:30 a.m.
Motion made. Request. Motion made in a second. Other question? Anyone from the floor wish to address the motion? Not all of us in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Next, I have a letter from Joe Schimon of Tuscarora. He has some zoning concerns about zoning issues and about his properties in Tamaka. This letter is available for people who want to take a look at it. How good it means anything else. Nope, that's all of them.
For our manager's report?
I put one item under my report. It's a notice from the School of County Tax Claim Bureau. It's for another repository sale. If you recall, well, the repository sale notices for 5:30, 7:00 Eastern. And if you recall, about a month or two ago, we've got a notice for the same property. At that time, the bidder was J. Valley Properties in Easton. The owner, we rejected it because when we did a search of the Department of State records, we found that his business wasn't incorporated. The owner of that company called me and we had a pretty lengthy discussion. He said he is incorporated. We both searched the Department of State website to find his listing. So he said he was going to pull his company paperwork and contact the Department of State about that. But he said in the meantime, he wants to build on it as an individual, same address. He says his plan is to essentially rehab the property and sell it to, you know, a family. This is a little business that he started. We searched our records and our county records and find what he told me, he doesn't own any other property presently. He's on his own estate. We don't see evidence that he does own any property in this school county. And it's most research we have come up with, no.
He's talking.
No outstanding violations done before. So I give that to approve the sale. Considerate.
Motion's been made to approve the sale of that property for a second.
I'll second it. Say we could get under a question for it.
Motion made second. Under the question.
Can you research? Is this a good opportunity?
Well, we know research in various ways. We check these.
What's your recommendation on this?
I can't find a reason to deny it. I guess that's the simplest way forward.
I ask a question. The forms that they give us. Are they, we approve the sale, is a form that they give us, right?
Correct.
So you add with it?
Yes. It's we approve or disapprove the sale, or if we disapprove. Do you have one? Yeah. And they want a reason why we disapprove.
Just a question, just a general comment. So if you try to purchase the property under a business that we can't find proof exists, which really raises a fight in my mind, and then we come back and say, well, you couldn't find it, so I, as an individual, want to buy it. I just, I don't know.
Well, you did provide it with an E.I.N., but you can't search the Department of State records by E.I.N.
Sounds like he can't explain why his corporation doesn't exist under the state's website either.
That's what he's saying.
You don't have to, I don't believe you have to provide proof of your corporation to get the E.I.N. We get a lot of E.I.N.s for states and we're not sent all the state paperwork. You fill out a line and that's all you have to do, the E.I.N.
But now, instead of having a corporation that we can't necessarily track down or maybe identify the officers of, that individual and his address.
Correct.
So it's traceable. Or people can go in person.
And if he puts it into that corporation that doesn't exist, obviously still have that person that originally purchased it, especially if it's that same entity, that same name that we can ask.
In my mind, it's always better to deal with an individual, you know, for our purposes.
Anything else on the question? Anyone from the floor wish to address this motion? Please stand and state your name.
My name's John Swinney. I didn't want to interrupt. I am the individual.
Period.
I didn't want to interrupt you, though, so I waited to be called on. Just to put the council's mind at ease, I have in the state of New Jersey, owned my own janitorial and maid service since 1999. It is, to date, a successful business. We are in good standing with both the federal, state, and local authorities. I live in Pennsylvania simply because it's cheaper to live in Pennsylvania than New Jersey. And this is another business that I'm looking to branch out on and started as a borough of Tamaka.
So is it, just a question, so the whole business, snap, any update on that?
Yeah, I researched that. When, this is my partner Jared Zimmerman. When I set up the partnership, the first thing I was told to do by the state of Pennsylvania was to research the availability of the fictitious name, which I did. And then I went to the federal government for the tax ID. After that, I went back to the Pennsylvania state site and filed the Pennsylvania 100. What I didn't realize I had to do was file a separate form for the fictitious name. The search that Mr. Steigerwald and I have been doing is for the fictitious name, not necessarily for the registration for taxes and employment and so forth. So what's missing is the fictitious name registration.
It's a registration of fictitious name. So a fictitious name is in a separate legal entity. It's still yourselves as, you know, as a partnership. So it would basically still have to stay in this name if you got it. You could just put it in the name of that fictitious name because it's not a legal entity.
Okay.
If you had, if you had an LLC, if you had a corporation, that's a legal entity that could hold title to the property, but you filed for a fictitious name, meaning you're doing business not under a different name as than yourself.
Right. Okay. Well, the application for you is under my name, so.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Anybody else on the floor wish to address the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So be it.
That's all I have at this point.
I can ask you a question while we're still under your report. Recreation Committee was given a copy of a proposal that looks like it's for equipment for concession stands. Could you elaborate on this a little bit more because I didn't know we'd be getting this?
Sure. I didn't know if you wanted to discuss that at this time or later on, but we can certainly, we can certainly address the, we sort of. Yeah. Rob and I had a discussion with the new renters of the concession stand at the pool today, specifically Clyde Donner's. He stopped at the top with us. All the equipment in the stand is the borough's. We purchased it all. And that's how our rental agreement was drawn up. We provide all of the equipment. Now, they can bring in other equipment if they desire, but we provide the basic equipment. Lately, we've been having some trouble with the electric deep fryers out there. Now Clyde tells me that the one, the heating element is shot. The device is basically shot. So what he would prefer to do, instead of getting another electric deep fryer, he would rather install propane fryer.
The previous renter had told me a similar story.
Yeah. Yeah, they, they, they're preferable because they, they heat up right away, they retain heat, they're cheaper to operate. They cost more upfront, but in the long run, they're cheaper to operate. So I can understand the reason.
The capacity as well to, yeah, as a cooking tank.
Oh, yeah. So I can understand the reason for that. So that's what he would like to do. So he went to Fagley Oil Company and provided us with a quote to install a propane tank there and along the line. And he also gave us prices for a new floor model, larger propane fryer. He said this is the style that he uses in his establishment. And then for, he also gave us, provided us with a price on a electric tabletop fryer as well. I checked his prices with the company that we use and they're comparable.
Who is it?
Oh, the, the electric fryer would be roughly $400 for a twin basket electric deep fryer, a 15-pound tank. The floor model propane.
Small electric deep fryer?
Yeah, it's bigger, first of all. But that's, I think, 90,000 BTUs, 35 or 40-pound single tank. Two baskets runs about $725.
So for $725 to get propane tank and again, pieces of propane?
No, that's just the fryer. To install the propane tank and run the lines into the building, the quote from Fagley is $942. Now, that does have a tank rental with fuel. Clyde will pay for the fuel, of course. I don't know how much of that is initial fuel. We didn't have that information.
Okay. Is that, and is that thing taking it under a hood now?
Yeah, there's an answering system on what that is. And we get it cleaned every year. Incidentally, Clyde has done a lot of work up there. I have to give him credit for that. He's done reed trimming and grass cutting and pressure washing. He cleaned the inside of the building. Looks really nice. I have to give him credit for that. Seems to want to do a ride. He's got, he's got a smoker up there in the back.
What's that for?
He's been up salad.
Are you buying?
There's a lot of ideas. There's a lot of ideas.
We have that.
In some, we probably should.
Well.
It's cool.
June 1st next week, or we have them next week. I hate to drop this on you at the last minute, but I just thought of that.
Motion of the buyer.
The gas system. I second that.
Motion made second. Under the question.
Just a question, how will we pay? What is going to come out of?
When I can come out of concession stand, I can. We've got concession stand fund for, I mean, for, I don't know, I believe there's probably about $40,000. It was created specifically for something like this.
Any other questions?
At least, what do you mean? At least, that's the end, I mean, some gas and purchase and all that stuff.
You should, sorry. We're just providing different equipment for the stand than what's currently sitting there now. I don't think it would, if I could give you a.
We're doing the least, we already have four of them.
We're responsible for the electric. Remains responsible for that. I don't know if it addresses other.
I think it says utilities. I'll have to look at, we're doing utilities. We could supplement it with another agreement. How fully agree you want to take it?
Anyone from the floor wish to address the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So be it. Chief Weaver.
I don't know.
Many reports? Finance waiting salary?
We had a meeting as we interviewed today, so I'll put this, the wastewater treatment plant. And we would recommend that, or I'm going to make a motion to require Jerry Brudetsky as a full-time wastewater treatment plant operator with a salary of $20,69.
I'll second. Motion made second. Another question?
What's the status of his certification? Full certified or his?
Fully certified.
He worked 10 years, but is local paid?
He ran the facility, is local paid, and runs a system in Rush Town. So he's familiar with.
He is known to supervise the annual supervisor and has worked with him before this for a whole time. Works in the store department for hometown. So he is familiar with the system and he's familiar with people on the plant. So he's, he's a good fit.
Anything else on the question? Anyone from the floor wish to address the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So be it. Anything else on the finance waiting salary?
We have interviews tomorrow for the office position. Early at 1:00 and ending at 9:00.
No.
Jerry's playing a sit.
Tomorrow and Friday. Friday, December 12th, 1:00. One, one interview Friday.
Oh, interview Friday?
Just one at 1:00.
Oh, okay. Play for him.
Any else? You good? Okay. Justin, you okay?
Yeah, I'm good.
Recreation, and you?
Yeah, I have one item now, one additional item after we take care of the prior question. I'd like to make a motion to hire Joseph Franco, Abigail Markovich, and Savannah Sabo as part-time lifeguards for the 2014 whole season.
Motion's been made second, to hire the individuals who are part-time lifeguards. Under the question?
Just a point that the application, we're all reviewed by our manager and she's, some of them are returning, some are new, but she's in favor of all.
Anyone from the floor wish to address the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So be it. Are there any other reports?
I have nothing further.
Any reports? Anyone from the floor wishing to address counsel? Mr. Brundsky.
I'm speaking up because first, this hole over here, like, 30, it's unbelievable. Can't get in and out. I mean, it's a hole and a half.
You didn't move, did you?
Oh, yes, but I'm ready.
I was just asking.
So the hole is so big out there, it's unbelievable. It's all, it's all Tamaka. Not only out here, but it's all Tamaka. Out here is where cars can't get in and out. It's unbelievable.
Where's it located right?
Right in the front here, when you go in.
Is it your driveway?
Yeah.
Well, that's very close. Repair, if it's in the.
If it's out the street, whose responsibility is it?
Up to Pendott.
Well, I think somebody should look at it. I think it, I think it's either Pendott or youth. I mean, should have it filled. It's unbelievable. Can't even get in, in and out.
I'll have to look at it.
We just, we just had a meeting on CDPG funding. We're looking to put quite a bit of money, funds to those types of things. But the other thing is that with the detour route, I know that's going to interrupt winter.
Oh, yeah.
But I mean, with the detour route that's getting extra heavy, that's going to be Pendott's responsibility to restore that. But in the meantime, we've been trying to keep up with it and then billing them, back billing them.
Or they should pay Pendott.
Right. So we're trying. We're trying to follow.
They got to have some responsibility.
Agreed.
We have a miller, right?
Yes.
Okay. Because my worry is with the pot hole patching that's happening is that it's being thrown in there and it's not being sealed.
It's only temporary.
So there are plans on.
Yeah, the stuff that's, the stuff that's in is just a temporary patch fix. When they can win their fix-it, fix it. There's no sense to fix it in the middle of the wintertime when it's going to get ripped up again. So when they come to the season where they can do these things, as they've been since we got the miller, they've been doing a nice job of milling things down, cutting out and setting it up.
Because no stadium, no hall.
Yeah, it's just temporary.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, we'd like to do a lot more. The trouble is, we're so short.
Ahead of right now.
We've got three guys in the street department and two guys in the water department. And right now, we're trying to get the pool right. Is our main focus. There's a lot more we'd like to do, we just don't have the people to do it.
Ken, well, is there, is there outfits that are out there that you can hire to come in and fill potholes or are we exclusively, or can only have Tamaka Borough workers fill the pothole?
No.
Are there companies out there that fill potholes?
Yeah, we could contract with someone to do it.
Well, why don't we do it?
Oh, we don't have it budgeted for.
We pot all the equipment so that we can do it, so we haven't had that short manpower.
Hire the previous guards.
We have part-time workers and usually community service workers, but we're still, we're still behind.
Everybody's having the same problem.
Anyone else on the floor wish to address counsel? Back, stand, state your name, please.
Carol Shatner.
Your address?
Was 613 North Railroad Street.
Our address?
Now it's 307 Bray Street. Last Thursday, my home was condemned. Okay? I have a wheelchair-bound husband. He is in a hospital bed. I was told today by the police, I'm not supposed to be in there. I had talked to my landlord and he said it was okay for you to go and get my things. I don't drive, I work out of a shopping cart. All I want to know is how and what I could do to get my things out of that place.
When the place you're staying is 613 Railroad Street?
I was staying at 613 North Railroad Street.
But that's where you want to remove the property from?
No, I want to take my things from there. That's the building. And I want to move it up to Ray Street where I'm at now.
Yeah, did you speak with the code officer?
I called him. And I haven't gotten no answer back.
Usually when a property is condemned, is there a yellow tag on it?
Yes, there is.
You can go in and out to make repairs.
The cop sergeant told me today, I'm not supposed to be in there.
Who's?
I got so scared, I closed up everything and just ran out.
Okay.
And like I said, my husband is wheelchair-bound. He is in a hospital bed. My husband right now is sleeping in his wheelchair because I can't get his, I'm afraid to go back there. I don't want to go to jail. You know, so what am I supposed to do? I myself am wheel, I, I too, I'm limited to my walking. I can walk a little, but I got to stop.
Do we have your number, your phone number, everything on file?
No, no.
Can you make sure that we have that? Because when Josh comes in first thing tomorrow morning, we'll make sure he gets a.
I mean, because when he, when he, when he first told me I had to leave, like I said, I'm limited to my walking too. You know, I have to run up and downstairs. I have an autistic child. I have another child that's MR. You know, so I mean, I'm limited to what I do. He came back at 7:00 that night and said to me, I told you, you had seven hours to get out. What are you still doing here? And I tried to explain to him. You know, what am I supposed to do? My husband can't get out of bed. He needs help. You know, we're from Tamaka. We just moved here a couple of years ago. We don't really know anybody. We stay to ourselves. We don't bother nobody.
Who told you to get out?
The code officer.
The code of Fuasman. He was very nasty about it. And I tried to explain to him, my husband is in a bed, in a hospital bed. What am I supposed to do? I just can't get my husband out. He's 400 pounds.
There's always a reason that it's condemned.
There's a good reason he asked you to move.
I understand why I had to.
I believe your landlord is.
Yes, this is my landlord, yes. This is my landlord.
Yeah, we've been over that with him, why you had to vacate.
I, okay, I understand why. But I mean, he didn't have to be nasty. I tried to explain to him.
Can I say something?
Hold on. One, one second.
Okay.
So the bottom line is, we need to get a phone number for you tomorrow. When Josh comes in, the zoning officer comes in tomorrow, we will have him contact you first thing in the morning.
Really, we, so we would, like I said, my husband needs his bed.
Understand.
I mean, it's something that's got to be taken down to pieces. I mean, it's just something you just can't pick up, put on your shoulder, and put in the bed, in the car. You can't do it. It's in pieces. It's got a motive to it. It's a regular hospital bed. You know, it's going to take me time to actually undo this bed and to try to get someone to come and help me move this bed out of this house. Like I said, I have been moving with my son in a shopping cart. You know, so you figure from, from Railroad Street all the way up to Ray Street, that's where I'm going. I put things on my power wheelchair. My son's carrying a shopping cart. You know, and my time is limited.
She's got her stuff, right?
I'm sure they are. Yeah, I'm sure we can make.
You know, my time is limited.
There are rules on how you have to get it doing. That's all we're saying is, whatever the rules are set up, that's the rules that you be followed. So let Josh get in contact with you tomorrow and make arrangements and see what needs to be done.
See, because my time is limited because, again, my little boy goes to school. I have him 7:00 to 1:00 in the afternoon to do what I got to do. Because I don't want my son to be affected by what's going on in his home. You know, he doesn't understand what is going on now. You know, but I don't want to bring him there, you know, for him not, you know, again, I don't want him to see what's going on.
There may be, and the other thing is, like I said, let, let's get your number after the meeting and we'll get Josh in touch with you. There may be some avenues that we can give you that, that can maybe help you.
I mean, like I said, I've gone to all the services here, Agent School of County. You know, they're, they're doing the best they can, you know, to help me with my husband. I mean, even my food, my food is still in the refrigerator. You know, I'm going from pantry to pantry. I'm going to soup kitchen. I'm doing everything I can. You know, I, I have a little boy. Like I said, he's autistic. I have another boy. He's 35 years old. He's MR. And then I got a 71-year-old wheelchair-bound man. What am I supposed to do?
See, so, we'll get your number afterwards and we'll give you some information that can maybe help you.
Thank you.
Anyone else on the floor wish to address counsel? Please stand and state your name and address.
Joseph Schmon.
Address.
P.O. Box 23 Tuscaraway. I'm the owner of the property. Try to work with everybody in town regarding this matter. So far, I end up in dead road. Meaning of that, if you read the paper, the note I gave to the young lady, you will understand better. As my fact, today, 5:00, I got a call from Josh to tell me to respect the property again. He asked me for permit. He asked me for permit, I gave him the paper and he asked me for many some bars, man. Even so, I told him the problem is not over here, it's in the other side of the house, the next door. And the next door, she doesn't want to cooperate. And when Josh came in this afternoon, five o'clock, well after five o'clock, uh, he changed his mind, he told me I asked him to do that, which is, the day before, a couple days ago, I asked him, when I saw him, he watched audio movie, I asked him to put it in paper. He rang me up, uh, to, uh, here and I talked to Mr. John and I spoke to Kevin. The answer from Kevin came to me, told me, oh, we spent too much time. And he was saying to Josh, why don't you decide both of them? That's not the way it can go. I'm willing to work with the issue, fix the issue in the proper way. Right now, I'm, I'm going to dead broke, I cannot move any further. Not only this issue, I have the issue on spreadsheet something right now that I need to move out and I cannot put anybody in spreadsheet because the next door, it's been vacant, God knows how long. If you read that, know, the one I gave her, you will understand a lot better than that because there's a no to come from the next door and condemn the property. What's going to happen when you are, every other day I'm going to have a ticket because nobody there cut the grass or what's going on? I would like to know. I mean-
And, and so when you bought the property, was the, so you have about four properties or more that you own in town, correct?
I, yes, I'm more than one.
And when you bought that particular property, was there anybody living next to it?
No.
So you bought that property knowing what was next door?
I didn't know.
I mean, I, I'm not here to argue with you, I'm saying it's-
I'm not going, I'm not going to say what's going on, but somebody has to be, take care of this issue because you leave vacant property and the no to, what's going to happen? Is it fun to look to the neighborhood vacant property and condemn properties? I don't think so.
So we, we told you what you need to do with six thirteen Railroad Street. You were here for three hours, uh, Monday. We, uh, Josh was in both places, he told you what you had to do. He explained it to Rob, well, let me finish. He explained it to Rob, he told you what you had to do, he explained it to me, I told you what you had to do. We spent too much time on this. Go fix it.
It's fixed, but is that the proper way?
Well, Josh-
It's not the proper way. He just, I told you, five thirty, he came into the place, he changed his mind, he told me this is, it's got to be, and whatever he asked cannot be done. It cannot be done. You cannot leave the main, uh, uh, the drain system in the house. You have to take it outside. You have to cooperate or you, you let the other party to work together, okay? To take, uh, to face the judge, it's going to take forever to face the judge. And that's why I asked Josh a couple days ago, if he did, go with me with the judge. I'm not asking him for a favor, all I'm asking him, he has our power to force the lady to come to the court as fast as we can and solve the problem. He told me we cannot do it. I did not waste his time, I did, I don't want to waste nobody's time, but I'm looking for, something's going on wrong and I'm willing to fix it, that's all I'm asking for. I'm not asking for a favor.
Joe, I want you to fix it.
Okay.
You have a broken sewer pipe in your ba, in the basement.
What are you asking?
It's full of sewage.
Okay.
Fix the pipe.
The pipe has been fixed the way he asked for.
Josh was next door-
The pipe, the pipe has been fixed the way he asked for.
Joe, I'm not talking. There's no leaks next door, it's all brand new PVC. I don't know why you keep blaming your neighbor. She's getting sewage in her property from your, your side.
The sewer, it's not, it's, there's no sewer in my property except her property.
And Josh looked at it tonight?
He looked at it this afternoon at five o'clock, five thirty. And he changed his situation, he needs something else to be, something else to be replaced. I did, if I can replace it, I'll replace it, but that's not the issue. The issue, it has to be set up, it has to be outside line for the drain.
We, we discussed this for three hours.
He didn't jump to the conversation, it doesn't matter how long it's taken, if you're not going to work the way it's supposed to be, it's not going to work.
You think there's a bigger problem down the line?
Exactly.
In the yard?
Exactly, in her yard, not my yard.
The basement still has to be fixed. So we said-
You can, you can not fix the basements unless you take the drain system to outside and put drains outside, not in the house. You will have that same issue no matter how, how long because the problem, it's not solved over there. I know what I'm talking about and you disagree or agree with me, I don't, doesn't matter, but you have to understand where I'm coming from. The situation, this young lady, she did not, she did not move purposely or I did not throw her, but the situation is not going to stop now today, not tomorrow, till the time it's took care of on separate line. That's why I'm asking you. I'm not asking you to do me a favor, I'm not asking you to work with me. All I'm asking you, do the proper way, that's all.
And, and the zoning officer has rules they used to follow, and I'm sure following those rules and you can work with them, continue to work with them to get you to problem resolved.
I wish, I wish. I'm willing to work with anybody, but the situation is not going to stop the way he asked for.
If he's asking for a way, that's the way it is by the rules, so.
Pardon me?
I said if he's asking for it to be fixed a certain way, probably by the guidelines, and that's what we need to follow on how to fix it.
I did, I did whatever, I did whatever he asked for, okay? That was-
Did you clean up the basement? Did the basement clean?
The basement?
Did you fix the pipe in the basement?
You cannot clean the basement till the time you solve the problem. You have to solve the problem before-
Then you clean the basement. If you still have a problem after that, come see us.
Okay, do you, you're asking me to-
He's going to have to fix the basement, no matter what.
There is, the issue, it's outside in her yard.
I know, you keep saying it's in the yard.
Yeah, because that's the way it is.
Fix the problem in your property first and then we'll see if there's a bigger problem. Why do you keep saying it's in the yard?
Because it's going to her yard.
You're going to install a broken sewer pipe in your basement.
Because, because, because it's going to her yard and if we have to fix it the proper way, I have to, it's her yard. That's the only solution.
No, no, we disagree with you. No, you need to do what the code enforcement officer told you to do.
I wish he understood what he's talking about, I would love to work with him, but he doesn't know much about it. That's my final word.
Thank you. Anyone else on the floor wish to address counsel? Care or nothing, mayor is not here. Solicitors report?
I faxed over a letter that I got today, it was on a, a assessment appeal on behalf. The county and the school district feel that appraisal is necessary, which may settle this short, or any sort of trial. And given the cost, it equals, excuse me, two thousand dollars for the appraisal that they need to get done on this property, uh, they proposed to apportion it between the county, the school district and the municipal. So Tomac was, what, what are we, twenty-eight percent?
Yeah, twenty percent for five hundred and sixty dollars.
And, and I, I told Glenn Rock, when he called me, we spoke, and I said, I, you guys have a problem with that. Spend that kind of money to, to rectify and get a good appraisal on it, that'll help you appeal. Well, on our end, we appeal, yeah.
New motion on that?
Mm-hmm.
Alright, new motion that we pay for approval for the appraisal of the property. Motion made second under the question. Anyone from the floor wish to address the motion? Alls in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So be it. Anyone else?
No one.
Reports from the officials?
Make a motion to accept the written.
Care or second?
Second.
Motion made and second to accept the reports of the officials of the borough. Under the question, anyone from the floor wish to address this motion? Alls in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alls opposed? So be it. Anything on our unfinished business? Anything, bills and claims?
We met on Monday at different times. Uh, I don't think you made it in?
No.
Ryan came up about one o'clock, I came about two-thirty, looked him over and, um, we had all our questions answered that we had and make a motion to approve the bills.
Care or second? Motion made second to approve, uh, payment of the bills, under the question. Anyone from the floor wish to address the motion? Alls in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alls opposed? So be it. New business?
I see there's a letter from Chief Weaver here, uh, I'm going to have to say his name. So you think this is a good idea to, to hire? Your recommendation, alright, I'll, I'll make a motion to, uh, hire part-time police officer Douglas Springer effective June nineteenth, I mean, June ninth, two thousand fourteen.
Second. Any, anything other question? Anyone from the floor wish to address the motion? Alls in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alls opposed? So be it. Anything else on our new business? Uh, executive session?
Make a motion if you'd want to executive session to discuss personnel matters.
Motion made layer second. Motion made layer second.
I'll second it.
Motion made second for executive session for personnel matters. Under the question, anyone from the floor wish to address this motion? Hey, we're in executive session.
Care.
No, not yet.